We're going to get started in about a minute. It is 6:30. I'm calling this meeting to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Fava.
Here.
Portado. Greer. Hanauer Friedman.
Here.
Lockshin.
Here.
Pugh.
Present.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Rogers. Sexton. Sullard.
Here.
Thorson.
Here.
Vanage Thirunath. Wiggs. Wilson. Cagle.
Here.
Carter.
Here.
Covert.
Present.
Crane. Esri.
Here.
Farney.
Here.
Locke.
Here. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Thorson, second. Ms. Lockshin, any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, moving on. We have approval of the May 13th, 2025, regular meeting minutes. Do I have a motion to approve them? Mr. Sullard, second. Bye, Mr. Esri. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, they are approved. Moving on to public input. I have first up Jeffrey Trask. Please come on forward. Push the button. Red means go, because why wouldn't it?
Intuitive or anything? I thank you for hearing me today. I want to just briefly talk about reparations for African-Americans in Champaign County. We are part of a group called the Champagne Urbana Reparations Coalition, which seeks to try to eventually form a countywide commission for African-Americans for reparations. Just to give you a little reason why we're trying to do this, there's lots of examples of reparations. Japanese Americans got reparations due to the time they spent in tournament camps during World War II. They got reparations in the 80s with under Ronald Reagan. There's many examples of Native Americans getting reparations for all the different history and things that happened to natives of this land. The Jewish community has gotten reparations from those who were victimized in the Holocaust and Nazi Germany. And even some former slave owners have gotten reparations for losing their quote-unquote "property" when slavery was outlawed in Washington, DC. And we go back as far as the Bible to find our first example of reparations, where the Israelites were able to take all the gold and silver they could from the Egyptians before they left for their 40, for the wilderness and left Egypt. So reparations is definitely not a new concept. What we're trying to do is identify the harms that have been done to African-Americans over the years, specifically for Champaign County, and then be able to create recommendations for those harms. That will be what the commission will be tasked to do. They'll do that through conducting research, getting input from the community, and informing that community-wide coalition. Our hope is that the City of Urbana, City of Champaign, Champaign County Board, and folks from UIUC, along with other individuals, and particularly the majority being from African-American community, can be on this commission to do this work. Just to give you some examples of reparations around the country, Evanston is kind of like the beacon. They've already distributed over $5 million in reparations due to the history of redlining. Those who lived in part or forced to live in a part of Evanston from 1919, 1969 are eligible to receive $25,000 each. There's also examples of commissions that are formed all across the country. I'm the Midwest Regional Leader for First Repair, which is a national group that does reparations. Kansas City, St. Louis, Detroit, Chicago, St. Paul. Shelby County in Tennessee already has $5 million for reparations. And places like Tulsa, Oklahoma, which I came back from recently, when the first African-American mayor announced a reparations plan for those who were victimized in the massacre 100 years ago. Also, places like Palm Springs have vetted settlements for African-Americans being displaced there. And also Ashford, North Carolina, has already designated $5 million for reparations in their city. We also have academic institutions like Harvard University and Georgetown University, who have both dedicated $100 million towards reparations. And St. Louis University, who has a commission for reparations as well. Simply put, reparations are a key thing, I think, that's necessary. And the reason why is that the United States by far is the wealthiest, richest nation in the world. No one would ever argue that. But we often are asked the question of, how did that happen? Right? And it happened because for 240-something years, the United States was able to utilize free labor to be able to produce cotton and other products that other countries weren't doing in terms of having to force some free labor. That foundation of free labor allowed the United States to go from zero economically, when it first founded as a country, to number two in the world by 1860. Right? 53% of all the money coming into the United States by 1860 was just from the cotton trade alone, because they were able to sell, produce, and deliver cotton cheaper than everybody else in the world. The foundational financial portfolio of the United States started from the freed labor of African-Americans. So all the different benefits we have in this country, the wealth and the opportunity where people from all over the world come here for, all that was kind of what was built off the backs of African-Americans. And that's why we feel that it's important. And I know there's a lot of polarization and politicizing of the word reparations and, you know, being on the fringe. But the reality is that the concept of it is really straightforward. That's something that we all are familiar with. One is that when you harm somebody, you apologize. I don't think that's foreign to anybody. And then two, if you're harmed in a way that has a cost for compensation, you get compensation for that harm. I say all the time, when I drive to the city of Chicago, I see billboards and have them, our attorneys, saying, hey, you get in an accident, I can get you some money for that accident, right? So it's not a strange thing to get compensation for where you're harmed. If we do the history for African-Americans in this country, through to enslavement, Jim Crow, redlining, massacre, seration, we could go on and on and on. We clearly have been harmed in various ways. Reparations have ceased to try to repair those harms. And so we hope that we will eventually present this, you know, to a full presentation hopefully soon, and be able to have you all consider the possibility of being part of that commission that we form. Thank you.
Moving on, Jada Fulcher.
Hi. Yeah, I'm Jada Fulcher. I'm living in the city of Chabana, Champagne. I've lived here for the past eight years. I'm speaking with the Champagne Urbana Reparations Coalition to speak kind of as like representation of the youth. I'm 25, I believe. I'm pretty certain that I'm the youngest member in our coalition, at least thus far. But I've been keeping track of the reparations movement for several years, ever since the work started. In Evanston, it's moved forward and expanded in such amazing ways, and I think that's something that we could really bring to Champaign County. And I don't necessarily have as much skin in the game. I am black, but I wasn't born here. I'm not a full-on townie, even though I've spent a lot of my time here and my adulthood here. And I recognize that, like, the work that reparations does is to especially help people for these institutional harms, generational harms that go back many, many years. But I can see as a person who came into this community, the effects that segregation on a local level in Champaign has affected the generational wealth of the black peers that I have in this community. Folks who I am friends with, who have grown up as young black people, who have been hyper-focused on by police and have felt disparities in their life. I've seen that happening in real time, as me and my friends try to learn how to build a life in a post-2008 recession, current, probably now, recession. And me and the majority of my friends live under the poverty line. Some of us have college degrees, some of us don't, but we're all in the same job positions, as everyone struggles to find any sort of job that pays. And these kinds of things, like reparations, have the ability to bolster us up and bolster up a community that hasn't been invested in for so many years. Or we're just starting to invest in, but reparations are really a way to, like, dig into that harm and, like, be very intentional about the way that we do that healing. And if you look even at just statistics, I mean, you think about the U of I. The University of Illinois' percentage of black students has never mirrored the percentage of black people who live in this community in Champaign County. And you have to consider the way that, like, racialization plays a part in that. So it's really important for, like, us as a community to just, like I said, be intentional and actually put in the work and not just the lip service of saying that we would like to support black people and we would like to see us succeed ways that can actually intentionally focus in on the harms that have been done. Because there are localized harms that happen to be black people historically in Champaign County, not just like the general amorphous black people were harmed in the past. It's not vague. It's specific harms. And we want to be able to tell those stories so that we all know and we are all aware, because history that we don't know, we are doomed to repeat, you know? And to tell those stories and then to make sure and do actual work to make sure it doesn't happen again. And we're seeing in our new administration how there are a lot of people who want to go back to a form of good old days that didn't exist for black people, because those weren't good old days for all of us. So doing reparations is a way for us to prove to ourselves that we actually mean what we say. We actually want to support marginalized people. We actually want to support black people. And it is the work that I hope to do, not just for myself, but I know this is continuing to work. I'm doing this for my children. I met my partner in Champaign. And we plan to get married, fingers crossed, and start a family and build a beautiful life for ourselves. And thinking about my kids, who will be black children in this community, hopefully. What kind of world that I want to build for myself and my future. And it's about pushing that progress forward, and I think that Champaign County is ready to make that commitment. That's all I got for you.
Thank you. Next, we have Renee Antrizio.
Red means go. And now I'm on. Hi, folks. My name is Renee. I am, I've lived in this community for over 25 years. I'm a licensed clinical social worker. I currently am the pastor of New Covenant Fellowship in downtown Champaign. Most of you probably know that is the place that Daily Bread Soup Kitchen was for over seven years. We have also hosted a men's emergency shelter, women's emergency shelter, when the community asks us to step up. We do. That's what we do in this community. My kids went to Southside. They went to Edison. They graduated from Champaign Central, which is only to say that I have come to love this community, even though I wasn't born here. I love the Mohamed Aquifer. I think we have an amazing community, and I think we can only get better. Five years ago, if you had asked me about reparations, I would have said, well, that's kind of impractical. How could that work? That was a long time ago. And in the last four or five years, as a congregation, we have really been on a journey to learn about reparations all around the world, as Jeff mentioned, and that there are lots of different ways that we can address the harms that have happened in this country. And for those who say, I didn't own slaves. I wasn't here. That was a long time ago. I get you. My grandparents were immigrants from Italy to Oregon. We didn't own slaves. But I have benefited for the incredible wealth of this country, which was, as Jeff said, built on the backs of African-Americans and their free labor. And we all benefit from that wealth. And as a pastor, and many of you who've grown up in churches, I believe that that old story of the Good Samaritan, many of you know it still holds, that when we see someone who has been injured, who has been robbed, who has been beaten, no matter who has done the harm, when we see them, our responsibility is, as a neighbor, even if we've never met them, most of you I have never met, but we are neighbors, our responsibility is to help them. And that is an opportunity to be neighbors to the community around us. I would like to say that learning about our history and the harms that have happened changes us. Education helps us understand how our fellow Americans, how the people in this county are experiencing the world. Our congregation has gone from just learning about reparations. We are a small congregation. In the last four years, people have contributed out of their own pockets, mostly white congregation, over $50,000 to a reparations fund. That is over and above their tithes and other giving and the things that pay my salary and all that stuff. People have volunteered to give that money because they have learned that this is how we help our neighbors. And so what we've started is investing in college savings accounts for African-American grandchildren. It is a small thing, but it's a meaningful thing. And it's meaningful to be able to take, to learn, and to say, we are sorry for these things that have happened, whether we did them or not, and we would like to repair. There was a News Gazette headline not that long ago that said, "Systemic Change Seems Elusive." And I wonder, is part of the reason that change seems elusive is because we have been unwilling to look at the past and say, it was wrong? We are sorry. We want to repair the harm, and we want to do something to cease it and to fix it. We can do this together. Together, we can make our community a better place. So the CU Reparations Coalition is asking that we come together, that we learn about the harms that have happened. Other communities have done this. We won't be the first. We don't want to be the last, do we? Right? Evanston has done it. People have done it. I see, I've only got 40 seconds left. We don't want to be the last. I think our community is better than that. I think that we can be leaders in this area, following Evanston and other communities that have said, what has happened here? How can we address the wrongs that have happened in our community and heal together? I think that would be a great thing for us to be stronger together as a community. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, James Lor.
All right, what do I do? Is it going already? Okay. Hi, I'm James Lor. I live in Urbana, and I've lived here for, well, I don't know, 15 years now. And I have a business in Lincoln Square Mall. I do a brand acupuncture. And I just wanted to maybe bring up some of the information locally here. According to a magazine, 24/7 Wall Street, from June 2023, Champaign-Urbana ranks number 20 in the county of the worst cities for black Americans. There's some further data on that. But as in other parts of the country, African-Americans in Champaign County are disproportionately suffering from a myriad of health issues. According to Illinois Department of Health, Champaign County is the second in the state for infant mortality. It's a rate of 9.4, which surpasses Chicago, which is 6.3, and East St. Louis, which is 9.3. Let's see. There's been many practices of redlining and restrictive covenants in Champaign County that have negatively affected people, black people, in a multitude of ways. So let's see. In 18 local subdivisions, there was, that deployed restrictive covenants. It affected 774 parcels to keep blacks out of certain neighborhoods. There's a lot more to read here. It goes on and on. And we know, like, the climate we're living in, that even, it doesn't matter what side you're on, but we have a problem in this country that we need to start working on. And like others have said, it's kind of overwhelming. And, you know, hard to think about, but because of the work I do, acupuncture, it's healthcare, taking care of people. A lot of times we're looking for a big change or a big, yeah, a big dramatic change, but oftentimes it's incremental. And I think it's time to start moving forward and taking action and actually healing not only this community, but, and the county, but the country. I think that's all. Thank you. I have a copy of that article if anybody wants it.
Thank you. I have no more slips. If any other member of the public would like to speak, going once, going twice. Thank you, each one of you, for coming. We like hearing from the public. Moving on, we have communications from the board. Anyone? Ms. Carter.
Thank you all for coming this evening. I did have the privilege on last week to attend your meeting that you had at Love Corner. Awesome meeting, very informative. Something that really stuck out to me was, it's time to unite, right? I think it's this time, this place in history, that we need to come together and fight for a good cause. And so I thank you for your endeavors. I would like to be a part of whatever you guys got going on. I'm on your mailing list, so the next meeting, I'll definitely be in attendance. So thank you for the invite.
Board member communicating. All right, Ms. Portado.
Thanks. I'm going to go ahead and take my turn. I wanted to just talk really briefly about some of the incredible work that the Regional Planning Commission does for us. I think sometimes, because they're just all about doing the work and getting things done, that we often don't realize the profound impact that they have in our county. I was reading their annual report recently. They brought more than $24 million in federal funding to our area and $11 million in state funding. 7,876 different individuals were provided a range of community services through their program. Their early child development served more than 100,000 meals to people in our community. But I think they also do a lot of things that people don't realize that they do. 3,540 police officers were trained. 168 different people received county bus passes. And another over 50 people got car repairs done so that they can continue to have transportation, which is one of the biggest barriers to being able to work. They do a lot of planning that is absolutely necessary for our county. They just completed the very important Lincoln Avenue Corridor Study and the Long Range Transportation Plan, which, if you do not have, you cannot get state or federal money for regional transportation investment. So the investment that they bring into our county outweighs just the individual programs that they oversee. I've had the opportunity to work and partner with them on a variety of programs, you know, from putting together the sleep program to helping us with our ARPA rental and utility assistance to when, several years ago, we wanted to figure out how to get a social worker into the sheriff's office. And we called RPC, and two months later, we had a social worker. RPC, the work that Delitzha does, the work of the incredibly talented team members that he has put together are integral to our county. They're the best part of what we do. They're incredibly valued. Later on, we're going to be hearing, we're going to be voting on some calls to action to continue some of this federal funding that has profound impact for some of the most vulnerable people in our community. But I wanted to take a moment to thank the people at the Regional Planning Group and for everything that they do for our county and affirm our commitment to continuing this valuable partnership that we have with them to serve, to better serve the residents of our county. Although, as we've heard, the gap of what we need to do is still large, and we still have a lot of work to do.
Further communications. Mr. Farney.
Thanks. This Saturday, a memorial race is going to be held in St. Joseph to honor the life of Illinois State Police Trooper Corey Thompson and to raise funds for a scholarship in his memory. Trooper Thompson was lost in the line of duty in October last year in a motorcycle accident here in Champaign County. He was a graduate of St. Joe Ogden High School, where he was a decorated cross-country and track athlete. This race is going to take place at the Sports Complex on the east side of St. Joe. Signups can be done through the Run Sign Up website. You just have to search for St. Joseph, and it'll show you races that are taking place there in St. Joe. In addition to the race, there's going to be food, silent auction, a raffle, live music. And I invite everyone to help us honor Trooper Thompson. And this will be a great way to help fund education for someone going into a law enforcement field. This Saturday is also Flag Day here in the United States. And so what is Flag Day and how did this day of national observance originate? Well, June 4th, 1777, the Second Continental Congress adopted a short resolution saying that the flag of the United States shall be 13 stripes of alternate red and white with a union of 13 stars of white in a blue field, representing a new constellation. 172 years later, President Harry Truman signed the law that designated June 14th as Flag Day. On Flag Day, the resolution, presidential resolution, calls on government officials to display the flag of the United States and urges people of the United States to observe Flag Day as the anniversary of the adoption of the flag by the Continental Congress. On your desks tonight, I left a lapel pin. I hope you wear this on Saturday and often. I would encourage everyone to fly the flag this Saturday, and like me, every day is a reminder of what a privilege it is to be an American. So celebrate Flag Day this Saturday. Thank you.
Further communications. Mr. Thorson.
Thank you, John, for that and taking over for Jeff, I'm sure. Two things, both very quick. One, just to sort of understand the impact of the current effects on research, on grants. We talk about RPC. We talk about federal money. We know that there's huge changes happening right now, happening right here in this community. I used to work for a small group on campus called the Nuclear Physics Group, and their budget was cut 72%. They will lose technicians, who will no longer work there. They will lose grad students who won't come. They will barely get the grad students they have finished. Those people will leave. The first grad student to leave is going to Switzerland this month. These are all people who get paid money and buy things and rent houses or buy houses in this community. And we will see an impact on reduction in research, reduction in grant funding, reduction of a lot of things. And if you think the budget situation for this county is bad, it's going to get worse because this is one of the places that this administration seems to target, because we're all woke and studying the physics of the nuclei, and apparently that's a bad thing. And that's not just that group. That's just the group I know the most about, because I used to work for it. In that vein, Saturday, which is Flag Day, at 4 o'clock at the courthouse, there will be a No Kings protest. It'll be 4 o'clock. I suggest, if you don't think this is the direction things should go in, that you show up and support people who don't believe that we should have kings in the United States of America. And you can wear your flag when you're there.
Mr. Pugh.
Thank you. Just want to thank you all for coming out. I know most of you already, but thanks again for showing up. Do appreciate it. This Saturday, it's also the Juneteenth celebration at Douglas Park from noon to 3:00. It's also my birthday, so stop on by. I have lemonade, snacks, treats. Say hi if you want to. Probably a few people sitting around with me too, and you never know who you're going to meet, so, thanks.
Happy birthday in advance. Any other communications? All right, seeing none. I want to say thank you also for coming out tonight. Get in touch with some of us. Thank you. Yes, Ms. Carter.
I think they've tried to get in touch with us, but I'm hoping in the near future that you guys would reach out to me when you want to do the full presentation because I hear there was an issue with getting you on the agenda. But I will hopefully make that possible whenever you guys are ready. Thank you. Have a good evening. Thank you so much for coming.
All right, thank you. All right, moving on, we have policy personnel and appointments. Our new chair, Ms. Van Schterenat, is not here. Vice Chair, Mr. Wilson, is also not here, so it's me. First up, we have Barb from the Lincoln Legacy Committee. She has a brief presentation. We'll just step on forward. I believe Megan already has it preloaded for you.
I also brought, you know, because I'm a historian, there's like always papers to hand out.
Awesome. We love souvenirs. Looks like your mic is already on, so just get yourself settled in and start whenever you're ready. Thank you.
Okay, good. I mean, I know how to do this, but do I know how to do this? There we go. Red meets go. Oh, it's on. It's on. Duh. Okay. Thank you for the invitation to come this evening and thank you for your support over the last 20 years, almost 19, I guess. I thought I'd give you, I had a professor once who said, tell people what you're gonna do, do it, and then tell people what you did. So that's what I'm gonna try to do. I'm gonna talk a little bit about how we were formed, then briefly what we've, the big, the really high spot was the Lincoln Exhibits Committee was formed and to place an exhibit in that space. In that same year, the county board joined with the, got in, entered into a memorandum of understanding with the Champaign County Forest Preserve District in, to accomplish that goal, with the hopes that they would be able to use the staff and the institutional knowledge, the then Early Merican Museum, now the Museum of the Grand Prairie, to get that exhibit finished. And we, I previously worked at the Museum of the Grand Prairie. My name is Barb Olschleger Garby, by the way. I don't think I said that. We acquired a $121,000 grant from the Institute of Museum and Library Services, which paid for the services of Taylor Studios and Rantool to install the exhibit in the courthouse. And there was a lot of donation of time and labor and a bit of county staff time, as well as the museum's time. That exhibit opened in August of 2009, the bicentennial year of Lincoln's birth. Yeah. And it's called Lincoln, A Large Presence in a Small Town. Have any of you been to see the exhibit in that courthouse? It needs a little sprucing up, but I'll get to that in a minute. It discusses Lincoln's legal presence in Champaign County in the 1840s and 1850s. Taylor Studios, a brand, I told you that already. At the same time, the, an exhibit in the Museum of the Grand Prairie was developed, funded through state funds and private donations. And that exhibit is called Champaign County's Lincoln and is meant to fill out the rest of Lincoln's time in Champaign County, his social connections, his political life, and reactions to his presidency and death. Local reactions, that is. That exhibit opened in March of 2010. So let's just advance a slide a little. This is the exhibit as it exists today. It's a, the one in the courthouse. It's a object theater, so it highlights different objects to tell the story of Lincoln's legal time here. And then there's also a kind of a dramatic audio visual presentation. It's not exactly a movie, but it's about eight minutes long, which Barbara Wysocki, who's on our, on our committee, says is perfect amount of time for, for schoolchildren. I think it's actually a perfect amount of time for everybody because nobody has a good attention span anymore. And it's, it's, it's entertaining. This is the, these are a few scenes from the exhibit at the Museum of the Grand Prairie. Other things that the Lincoln Exhibits Committee do, does, we have, we have been involved in the development of the Lincoln Waysides throughout the county. There are nine of them now. And I've listed the locations here. All of this information is in the handout that I gave you, along with a lot of other stuff. The first Waysides were installed in 2004, and then there were a whole bunch in 2009, and a couple of, a few late years later. They, some of them turned pink and had to be reinstalled. So we've been coordinating with municipalities and institutions to get all of that done. And now, actually, I'm, I'm working through an inventory of all the signs so that we know what condition all parts of them are in, not just the pink parts. Another project that we undertook was in 2008, in celebration of the state's bicentennial. The Illinois State Historical Society wanted a Lincoln photograph in every courthouse. And fortunately, we had a donor who was willing to pay for that to happen in Champaign County. And so to celebrate the bicentennial of the state, we placed the Hessler, this Hessler portrait in this, in the courthouse and had a program, Lincoln-related program as well. The portrait was unbearded because all of the time Lincoln spent here, except for his last month, he did not have a beard. Another thing we do is every year, work with the DAR to bring their flag display for Constitution Week. And we try to get a couple of school groups into the courthouse that week. It sometimes is longer than a week. And the DAR also helps us maintain the marker at the courthouse. That, these courthouse markers were placed in the 1920s as a result of the, by the DAR, who were inspired by a speech by Joseph Cunningham. Joseph Cunningham was a judge and a lawyer in Champaign County who knew Lincoln and lived into the early 20th century and told about his, his, he's also the historian for the county before, before 1905. The, so they now maintain these markers, which are throughout the state, but in Champaign County, they do, they do the work. Last year, in 2024, we celebrated the, in the courthouse with a, the Lincoln gave a speech against the Kansas-Nebraska Act at the court, at our courthouse, not the particular one that we have, not the courthouse we have now. But in 1854, so it was the 170th anniversary of that speech, we also had a small exhibit. As you can see, this is the, this is the, the crowd we had that day. It was a great event. We had music, period music, and a talk by Steve Beckett on the subject. What are we going to do in 2025? Well, we're hoping to, and this is the proposal you got, we are hoping to at least do a quick renovation of the exhibit. There are some audio and visual problems with it right now. They're not too bad. It's still, still good enough to, to, to visit, but it could use some help. So we're hoping to do that this year. We also have, are going to complete that brochure that I gave you. The brochure is a draft, so if you see a spelling error, you can contact me. My name is, my email is somewhere on some of the materials you've received. Or anything else you think might be helpful, that'd be great. We also, there's a website that has the ability to create a trail, so I'm hoping to do a, a trail of all the things you can see about Lincoln in the county this year. And we'll participate again this year in the Archives Bazaar, which is something we did last year, and that should be in your other things in their annual report. Next year, the Abraham Lincoln Initial Heritage Area Looking for Lincoln Coalition has produced an exhibit about the Underground Railroad, and the Urbana Free Library will be hosting that in January and February, which is kind of awesome because it's bi semi-quintcentennial year of the country. And it's also African American History Month, so Black History Month in February. So it's going to be a great time to have the exhibit. And we're participating in, in that with them. And then we, we have been approached to support and will work with some people to hopefully get funds donated to place a Waysides, one of the Lincoln Wayside signs at the Royer Hotel. Because before it was a Royer Hotel, you may remember it was the Lincoln Hotel. And that was because there was a boarding house slash tavern there in, on that site in the 1840s and 1850s, owned by the Kerr family. And Lincoln stayed there. So we're hoping to tell that story there. And then we will, our big, a big project for next year is to celebrate the 125th anniversary of the Champaign County Courthouse, hopefully with, and tell the story of the courthouses that have been there. And I think that's a really appropriate thing for the Lincoln Legacy Committee to do in 2026 for the semi-quintcentennial. I'm gonna say that right someday. And, you know, just in case you didn't know what the courthouse looked like, I guess, I put that slide in. Our long-term goals are to actually do some public study to, to determine what they'd like to see in, in the Lincoln exhibit in the courthouse. It's, of course, we will be challenged, like everyone else, by funding. The Institute of Museum and Library Services, who provided the previous grant, has been stripped of its funding at the moment. So, you know, we will probably have to look elsewhere for, for, for funds if we want to do a major renovation. We have had some people tell us that, that what is there now has, is holding up. So maybe it just needs a small refresh. I don't know. We're gonna have to develop a plan and, for that. But we also want to develop a plan to provide for the sustainability of the exhibit and find out whether, you know, you all still want it. And then we hope to continue the same quality programming that we've been doing for the last 20, 19 years. So if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Mr. Thoresland.
The fine folks at the Lincoln Legacy Committee put up with my presence. That's the county board liaison. They do some interesting stuff. They do a lot of interesting stuff. You've seen some of it here. They have members that are part of the Urbana Library, the Museum of the Grand Prairie. They're always looking for other members.
That's a good point.
A lot of the stuff that they need to do with this is not big dollar things. I know we're not in the best financial shape right now, but I think that the committee will come up with some sort of proposal to at least update the AV portion of it. Taylor Studios is notoriously expensive, so it would be really cool if we could find some other way to do that. But I appreciate what they do. I think people have seen events that they've worked with and not known about the committee. But if you ever need to know anything, Barb is a wealth of knowledge. So are some of the other people on the committee. So thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you, Eric. Yeah, just to reiterate, we work really hard to find money that doesn't come from the county, that, or comes from private individuals or granting agencies, honestly. But it's always helpful to know that there's, you know, a little bit of, of help from you all. And we appreciate all that you have done for us. So thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you for coming and talking with us. We appreciate seeing, we hear about the exhibit in the courthouse all the time. So, thank you so much. I'm happy for what you do. All right, moving on, we have appointments and reappointments. And entertain a motion for a resolution appointing Timothy Bartlett to the Forest Preserve District term July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2030. Motion by, all right, we have Mr. Kegel, second by Mr. Farney. Any discussion? All right. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Great. All right, we have an omnibus motion, resolutions appointing Vicki Niswander to the Developmental Disability Board and Ann Robyn to the Developmental Disability Board, both terms July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2028. Ms. Lachin, second by Mr. Kegel. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, those move along. We have resolutions appointing Kathy Emanuel, David Thies, and Brent Reece Steck to the County Board of Health, all terms July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2028. We will need to add the eight and the F. May I have a motion? Ms. Hanauer Friedman, second by Ms. Greer. Any discussion? Oh, yes.
Yet none of Mr. Reece Steck's information was in our packets, and it says it was to be distributed.
Oh, it was not. We have Steve over here.
Error on my part. Dr. Reece Steck was a late applicant. He is actually being reappointed. I will get that information to you. I do think it's advisable for us to have as many physicians on the Board of Health as possible.
So are we all good with proceeding with this, with Mr. Reece, or Dr. Reece Steck as well? Everyone's, all right. We have a motion. We have a second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Great, moving along. Currently vacant appointments are available on the website. We have our county clerk's monthly fee report for April of 2025. Now we have a resolution appointing Daniel Wiggs to the opioid settlement task force. Do not let his, all right, first we have Mr. Thoresland, we have Mr. Sullard. I, as a point of discussion, will say that his absence is not refusal. He sought it out. He requested specifically to fill the vacancy left by Dr. Store. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Great. Then we have a resolution appointing Carolyn Greer to the litigation committee. We have Mr. Sullard, second by Mr. Esri. Thank you, Carolyn, for your willingness. I appreciate that. Any discussion? All right, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Okay, there is no other business. I am not the chair of this committee to have a report. We're designating items 7B, 2A, B, C, D, E, F, and D1 and 2 for the consent agenda. Now we'll move along to Justice and Social Services. Chair Rogers also is absent today, so Vice Chair Sexton, it's up to you.
A monthly, oops, sorry, I can't turn this on. Monthly reports, all reports are available on each department's webpage throughout the department. And that's probation and court services for April 20- And that's probation and court services for April 2025, public defender for May of 2025, and animal control for May of 2025. B is Rose Krantz, and I'm going to give that back to you.
Thank you. I just wanted to update everybody. Rose Krantz has had a series of employee turnover, and they reached out recently and let us know that they cannot ethically continue to say they're fulfilling our reentry program. So they've tendered a resignation, and we accepted it. So the clients that were receiving services through the reentry grant were seamlessly transitioned to their criminal justice grant. So the clients are still receiving services. We are no longer going to pay Rose Krantz for reentry work. And we now have the money that had been budgeted for this year that we're seeking to reallocate. There should be a proposal coming to us for the full board meeting, perhaps to fund someone who's come to us at Public Comment recently seeking funding for a program at JDC. So we should have that by the time we meet in a week and a half. That's the end of Rose Krantz. Back to you, Mr. Sexton.
In commission, oh, sorry. Get used to that. A resolution to support the Community Services Block grant. Can I get a motion? Jen, Erin, any discussion? Erin did. Okay, then, vote for a yea or a nay. So all in support?
Yea.
Any against? Okay, it passes. Resolution to support of the full federal funding for Head Start. Hanauer Friedman. Yeah, I'm terrible with names. And Lachin. Okay, all in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. A resolution to support the full federal funding for the low-income home energy assistance program, LIHEEP. Eric?
Karen.
And Carolyn. And any discussion? Comments? Okay, we'll vote. All in favor? Those opposed? Motion passes. I don't have any other business. I don't have the chair's report. Designations of items to be placed on the consent agenda are C1, C2, and C3.
Thank you. You did an excellent job for the first time. Finance, Chair Hanauer Friedman. A tough act to follow. Okay, budget amendments transfers. So first we have our update information-only monthly general corporate BUA report. So just highlighting for everyone that right now we're up to a deficit in fiscal year '25 of over 2.2 million. Moving on, number two, budget amendment, BUA 2025-5-478, Fund 2075, Regional Planning Commission, Department 100, Regional Planning Commission, increased appropriations, 305,500, increased revenue, 305,500, reason appropriation of additional IHDA grant funds for the Strong Communities Program. Can I get a motion? Sullard, Lachin, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Budget amendment, BUA 2025-6-27, Fund 2110, Workforce Development Fund, Department 110, Workforce Development, increased appropriations, $177,705, increased revenue, the same, reason appropriation of WIWA Rapid Response Grant Funds. Can I get a motion? Fortato, second by Thoresland. Any discussion? All those in favor? Signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Budget amendment, BUA 2025-5-480, Fund 2840, ARPA, Department 75, General County, increased appropriations, $975,000, increased revenue, zero, reason appropriation of ARPA fund balance to support additional project and contractual expenses projected for the remainder of fiscal year 2025. Can I get a motion? Lachin? Sexton? Any discussion? Sullard, yeah.
I have a question on the number. I'm seeing 9.75 million, not 975,000.
Travis has his hand raised. Yeah, Travis.
You are correct. It's the $9 million number. I was going to raise my hand, but you caught it first. Looks like a zero was just left out of the agenda. It's basically the remaining fund balance in the ARPA fund that has to be spent by '26. It's moving at '25 so we can spend it if projects move quicker than, or quick enough to spend it all this year.
Good catch, thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Budget amendment, BUA 2025-6-12, Fund 2500, County Grant Fund, Department 75, General County, increased appropriations, $74,377.88, increased revenue, the same, reason appropriation of Firearms Safe Storage Strategies Grant Funds for the remainder of fiscal year 2025. Can I get a motion? Greer, second by Farni. Any discussion? I will just say, I think this might have been mentioned somewhere in the packet, but this is great because we got a continuation of this grant for another year from the Illinois Department of Public Health. No further discussion. All those in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Okay, B auditor, reports are available on the auditor's webpage. You'll find monthly reports there. And then we do have our regular audit update, which is discussion only. You should have a memo from Travis updating you on what's been going on since our last meeting in terms of hiring folks and coordinating with CLA to make sure that our fiscal year '24 audit is moving forward as best as possible. And just want to make sure everyone sees that, you know, this audit will not be completed by September 30, even though that would be the goal. But because of the delays and work that was not completed in the auditor's office, there's just no way that that will happen. So the goal is really to get everything done before the end of the year, before we're hit with any major grant penalties. Yeah, Erin.
Just, I would assume that we're letting already people know that we aren't going to have our audit done in time. I mean, those who, you know, provide grants, just to be ahead of, get out ahead of it to let them know that, hey, we aren't going to be on time again this year.
Yeah. Chair Locke.
I can speak to that. At the most recent RPC meeting, Jeff and Executive Summers and I were very blunt in letting RPC, the various commissioners and the staff know that the goal is for us to have this completed in time to not hit those big bad penalties that loom when you hit 60 days. We're hopeful, we're hopeful. Every day, we learn something new that should have been done, even as, like, the 2023 audit didn't get put away properly so that we can open things up. So there's just things we learn every day that need to be done so it can be done properly. And we're hopeful that this will be the worst year for it, and we'll move on.
Yeah, and just, I'll get you in just a second. I just wanted to add, because somewhat related, we just learned today that the auditor's office has not been uploading checks on a regular basis like they're supposed to. And this is a serious problem for folks with grants, the various departments with grants that are reimbursable because you need to show proof of payment. And so we had a situation today with the county clerk's office has a half a million dollar grant that they need to show proof of payment for, and they found that none of their proof of payment checks had been uploaded for the last over a year now. So it's just another issue. But yeah, Stephanie.
Not to put anybody on the spot, but do you all have a sense on the timeline to when the trial balance is going to be done? Is there a goal that was supposed to be done in April?
So I don't know yet. Travis may have a better sense of that, but I think working with CLA's timeline as best we can, Travis, do.
I don't have a specific date yet. We are still working on, the first thing that has to be done are tieouts that usually are done monthly for each of the funds. And they haven't been touched since December '23. So we've got a bunch of tieouts and correcting journals to do before we can start running trial balance. So I am working with CLA and some consultants and trying to get a timeline. My plan is to have a memo every month at the COW. So hopefully next month I'll have a little bit more info. We've kind of spent, you know, trying to get everything prepared and trying to figure out a plan moving forward since the last COW. So a lot of the dates and stuff aren't tied down yet.
Emily.
We've gone around this quite a bit, but I do think it's worth noting for the record, if anybody watching at home, Mr. Danos did post a recent op-ed. And verbatim, what was said was that he has washed his hands of the 2024 audit. So if that does not reflect the finality, I guess, of where we are with this audit, I don't think anything else will.
Matt.
This might be a question more for Travis to answer, but we were told with the April deadline, there were 59 total items that needed to be done. Seven had been done. Is it fair to say that missing 52 items is causing this to now not be done on time this year? Is that at least, you know, being delayed that much?
Yeah, I mean, that's reflective of all of the work that should have been happening over previous months that has not happened. And Travis may have more to add.
I don't really have too much more to add on that. But yeah, that is a big factor of it. The tieouts need to be done before a lot of those can be turned in, though. So it wasn't even to the point of doing some of those items yet. So again, the tieouts are kind of the first step that we have to do, and then we can work on a lot of those items. There are a few that we are working on and uploading that don't need the tieouts done, and we are working on those as well, but.
Stephanie.
My assumption is at some point, we're going to see a budget amendment in order to accommodate the expenditure. Do you have a sense of when that will be?
You mean in terms of the people that were paying to do the work? I'm not sure whether we would do that all at once or because it's salary over time. But I mean, we will have folks working on this through the fall. So hopefully, it'll all hit fiscal year '25.
I also just want to thank Travis Orion, who's coming back for like the second time to save us, and everybody who's working on this. You weren't elected to do this work. To be blunt, you're not being paid to do this work. And I feel like appreciation is not, it's probably cold comfort, but you have mine.
Yeah, and I would just like to add to that, that, well, more appreciation for Travis and his team and the work they're doing, and just how nice it is that we are finally getting regular updates on progress on this very important piece of work that is needed for the functioning of this county. So any other discussion questions? Okay. Moving on, we have the treasurer's monthly reports are posted online. And then we've got Circuit Clerk, approval to release RFP 2025-007, Software and Implementation Services for a Court Case Management System, CCMS Software Systems Environment. Can I get a motion? Lachin, second by Thoresland. Any discussion? Oh, yes, and we have representative from the clerk's office here if there are any questions. Do you want to come on up in case I? Okay, Stephanie.
I see that the bid opening, or the RFP opening is in late August. Do you have any anticipated, how quickly you plan to award? And the reason I ask this is I feel that this project, in understanding the full scope of its funding, is going to be incredibly important for us as we plan the budget for fiscal year '25. So just making sure that we have the full landscape of what that is, I think is going to be imperative into our ability to intelligently discuss the budget. So, and I think, if I, I believe the bid opening is after our budget hearings, but before we have our September meeting. So I just was wondering if you knew how, like, how long you anticipate to award?
Hi, I'm Isak Griffiths. I'm the Chief Deputy Circuit Clerk. And there's not actually even a commitment to award. When we go back to the original conversation, the question was, what's really in the best interest of the county and of the court system? And part of it is not having an, really an idea if what's in the best interest is moving toward having a court system, modifying the current court system. And it's really hard to have an intelligent conversation about planning and financing and budgeting and ways to move forward without really having a better scope of what it is we need to do. And so right now, there's not a definite timeline in terms of assessing because we have no idea if we're going to get two quotes or 10. And so we need a little bit of that. But I don't know that there's really any expectation to go into the next budgeting cycle for 2026 trying to fund a complete court system. This really is part of the beginning of the conversation over what's the best interest. What would the cost look like? How would we move forward? If something comes in and it's incredibly attractive, and everyone is like, yes, this would be crazy not to move forward, we're certainly open to that conversation. But part of it is we just simply didn't have enough information to have an intelligent conversation. And so the push, especially between the Circuit Courts and Admin Services, is let's find out exactly what it is we really are talking about and figure out what the next step forward is. And without real numbers, it's just not a conversation. So part of it will depend on the results from this bid in terms of really scoping it. And I don't, I don't foresee there being a concrete, yes, let's go forward and pay $15 million starting next year. Like, that's not the intent of the conversation. But without knowing really what's going to be in the best interest of the court system, it's kind of hard to give a definitive answer, other than this really is just kind of the big first step. But I think it's an important one.
Any other discussion or questions? Okay, thank you, Isak, for staying with us here. Okay, all those in favor? Signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Thank you.
E State's Attorney, resolution authorizing an intergovernmental agreement between the Illinois Department of Healthcare and Family Services and the Champaign County State's Attorney. Can I get a motion? Chair Locke, second, Farni. Any discussion? See none, all those in favor? Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. F, Regional Planning Commission, one, resolution authorizing an amendment under Strong Communities Program, round two, First Amendment, PID number 52418. Can I get a motion? Esri, second by Farni. Discussion? See none, all those in favor? Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Number two, resolution authorizing the application, and if awarded, the acceptance of the Number two, resolution authorizing the application, and if awarded, the acceptance of the WIOA Rapid Response, i.e., grant. Can I get a motion? Sullard? Again, by Sexton. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion passes. I have no other business, no chair's report. Designation of items to be placed on the consent agenda are 2, 3, 4, 5, D1, E1, F1, and 2.
Just to clarify, D1 does not need to go on the consent.
Thank you. Never mind. Back to you, Chair Locke. I wouldn't have known that either. Thanks, Megan. With that, we call this meeting adjourned at 7:40.